Make sure that everybody gets the results. We don't have information about the actual tests. The positive results will come through maiden and be added to our tally. So I don't know what the timing of that's going to be. It might show up, all those A positive cases would show up later this week. So we probably are going to have a bulge at some point as part of our counts. But we'll talk more about all that on Thursday. Town report and the warrant. Does the board want the town report printed? Which I know it sounds a little ridiculous, but we're doing about 100 copies, 125 now. And most of them don't get distributed. It's several thousand dollars to print them. I didn't know whether it made more sense to get one or two copies printed in eight and a half by 11 and have those particularly bound. One for the town clerk's office, let's say, or one for the historical museum and one for, I think the state house gets one, the state house library. We'll have it online. People can print it out if they want to, but we won't be spending thousands of dollars on it.
And if somebody wants one, we could probably print it for them.
Right, absolutely. The warrant's still going to get printed. We're still doing that. That's normal. But the report, we just spending a lot of money for boxes of books that end up being used.
Well, I was gonna say the boxes are still piled up.
I would think that we had probably five printed along with the library.
Yeah, we don't need a lot.
Yeah, so I could get five of them and then we, I don't know whether.
Basically just copies.
Yeah, we just have, well, we find a binding press to bind them nicely so that they're preserved. You know, we put them on our cover paper or something like that.
Right.
If the board's okay with that, we'll head in that direction.
Any other, any motion?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Legal, no report. Recycling abatements. We did hear from attorney Mayo about the court case that one of the residents cited it's not applicable to Halifax. The case up in Boston of Emerson College was very different in that our situation is that the fee can be abated. In Upper Boston, it could not be abated. So people have a choice whether they're going to pay it or not. Also, the fee went to the general fund in Boston for no particular purpose, whereas here we have a particular purpose, which is the recycling program, and it goes in a separate enterprise fund. So it's not considered a tax. So, you know, I understand the person's point of view on that, but it's not, having a due of counsel, it's not a reason to abate the bill. I don't know, I believe there's one or two that came in.
On that one, that's something that we had already denied. So for them, we probably have to write them a letter explaining how the case went ahead. So they were already denied. Then I have two more that one of them came in under the rule of 17th, because he paid as well for that student case, but they have saved on the case. That's the legality of 1210. And then the other one came in the other day. Except for the seven. So I'll check that and go get those. That's what I'm considering.
I mean, once that we're a day late, we've been rejecting. I mean, we think we're into December now. I can't see that we could do anything different at this point.
Sorry about that.
Anybody have any other comments?
I think, I think we just need to schedule that meeting.
Yeah, that was going to be my next comment. Hopefully we can get that done sometime soon. Do we want to vote to not approve them?
So moved.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any kind of, there's one we have to talk about.
Oh, we need, we're talking about.
It's one that they signed on the date, it's a one letter.
Which section is that?
It's in the blue section.
In the blue?
If it's a one letter, I.
It's in the other.
Maybe we just put it up until Thursday.
You can, alright. So why don't you do that, not write it at your station or your desk?
Yeah, yeah, because I have not read it.
It's already been denied, but there was a story with nine.
Anybody have an objection to that? Wait till Thursday for that?
No.
We don't need a motion for that.
No, you, you have to.
Table it until Thursday.
Moving into Thursday, yeah. Any other ones, Pam? Okay, so we're done with the abatements for now. Hope's Tavern Roofing, waiting here back and stop on measures they'll take for preserving the roof during this winter. Fieldsong Farms has no report on the council and aging director evaluation. I believe some of the members of the council on aging are here. I don't know the actual intent of everybody. It's on the agenda simply because it's on the agenda. It's the anniversary of Susan Wallace's appointment to be council and aging director. The process would be, and the board indicated was to have Tom do the actual writing evaluation. I'm working with Tom and putting that together to send up to the treasurer's office. So official record and for the step increase. I certainly see no reason to other, to do other than an excellent evaluation in terms of writing for Ms. Wallace. I'm sure the council on aging members can contribute to that. But I think this would have been a challenge for anybody, given the circumstances of the pandemic coming in just a few months after she started. And I think it's been challenging, it doesn't matter which council on aging you're talking about across the state. And she's just done an excellent, you know, a wonderful job. She's been able to get programs going on outside the building, other locations. She's been able to continue to provide services at people's homes or online or via phone and everything else. And try and preserve the lives and well-being of the seniors in Halifax. I'm sure that the council members would want to say something.
I wholeheartedly agree. I mean, you couldn't have picked the worst time to go on board. I mean, like Charlie said, as he alluded to, it would have been challenging without COVID. And never mind with this horrific event. Kudos to you for doing the job you've done. But anybody from the board would like to jump in? Sure.
I think she's doing an excellent job so far. She has provided all the services that we had before. She's done, she has become acquainted with many of the seniors in the town. Not as much as she should, she was, she would be able to if we didn't have this COVID, of course. She's very cautious about the facility. She has provided like a book club we had outside, the men's coffee, which is a very popular thing.
Yeah, when is that coming back?
It has been going on up until now, when the weather has turned, because they have been meeting at, they loved it so much that they've been going to each other's houses and sitting in driveways distancing and having their, bringing their coffee in from Cumberland Dunkin' Donuts. Like I said, she has done an excellent job, I think, until now. And she has resumed that. I think she is exceptional, I think, because she came in at a very difficult time when people were very confused about what was going on and didn't know how their lives were going to be interrupted. And she just did her thing and took over and did a very nice job. I'm very proud of that for her.
All that, and she's managed to move two times in the meantime. Which is no easy task.
Thank you for that input.
Because if the project comes down, it can't go out when we vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I agree that she has done an excellent job over there. People, seniors that I've talked to think she's done a very superb job in still providing the services that they do. And I get my phone call all the time as to, it wasn't at the coffee hour, it was on off. But no, I agree.
I think you've done an excellent job as well. So thank you. You know, you put up with a number of distractions and one of them being the building when you first stepped in and then COVID. So thank you for your time and service to the town.
Yeah, we didn't even talk about the physical problems with the building and then difficulties finding drivers and all of that. I mean, that would have been a challenge for anybody in gross to the occasion. Do we need to take any official action?
No, you're, you're going to be writing the evaluation, but obviously I think you've indicated that the intent of the board is to send an evaluation to the treasurer's office indicating that she certainly isn't deserved of receiving the step increase based on her work during the past year.
Do you want that as a motion?
Sure.
Yeah, sure. I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Moving on.
We have a 7:45.
Yeah.
Sorry, 6:45.
When do we have a 6:45? Is it High Hope's?
Mr. Ragneta.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yes, as long as the council.
Hello, introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone.
To the audience in the camera.
I am Michael Ragneta. Been in Halifax about a little over a year now. Moved in November 25th, a year ago. Just to piggyback on the comments about Susan, just at the one meeting I was at, I'm going to introduce myself. I thought her ability to communicate and her leadership was unbelievable. The room was entranced and just it was really a fun dynamic to watch. Made me want to be a part of that even more, so.
Well, thank you for stepping up. It's always difficult to find volunteers. I know you've volunteered in the past. Remember talking to you recently?
Yeah, me and a gentleman, one of the gentlemen that was on the Parks Commission, almost right after I moved in, he used to go to town hall and pull up a talent bank form. And I had never really done much in town stuff. I'd been volunteering on other projects for years. And that's what led me to the talent bank and do the form and just checked off all the things that I have some sort of interest in history with, so yeah, here I am.
Well, I want to warn you, it's a giant hook. Once you're in, you're in. And it's a good thing.
I'm going to live here for the rest of my life, so I plan on doing as much as I possibly can to help this town do what it needs to do.
Thank you, thank you. Comments from the board?
No, I think we're very happy to have him come on board, if that's what he wants to do. We warned him in advance.
They did.
Did, we did, we really did.
They tried to scare him.
We didn't want him to come in under any great expectancy at this time anyway. But we, but we love to have him come on. I think a male on the board is a necessary thing to cover the senior males in the community. And I think he'll do a good job.
I think he exudes energy and I like that.
True, he's very young comparatively.
Yes, disturbingly young, actually.
I'm really not that young. I'm a grandparent, doesn't that count? Automatically, that elevates me, isn't it, to the senior level?
How long you been a grandparent?
I have three, I have twin three-year-olds and a one-year-old granddaughter, so.
When do you get to 10, I mean?
I will, I will. I'll be here, but you're too. You've been in a little spooker, you might have, you know?
Excellent. Sue, do you have anything?
No, we're happy to have one of them. Like Joe said, we're too relieved, like from a male perspective, if you think it's great and it doesn't want to happen to you.
So what type of recreation programs were you involved in?
So I currently actually manage an indoor sports complex, a group of them. And I've been involved mostly in youth soccer for the past 30 years as a coach administrator, club director. I was the kind of guy that when my kids were in school, my family was raised in Rockland, my wife is from Rockland. So she actually works in the school system there as well. She's managed cafeteria for 20 something years. So I was the kind of guy that I worked nights. I owned a business previously, a bakery 100 years ago. And a whole different life. So I'd work nights and daytime I would be the guy that would be at school every day, all day.
So the only seniors you've been dealing with were seniors in high school, right?
You know, that's funny. So my affection, my passion for seniors in the elderly and in the aging community started when I was really young. My parents got divorced when I was 10. One of my mother's first projects was to introduce us to a program 40, 51, so 41 years ago or so called Foster Grandparents. And we met a couple that was up the street from our home in Groveton, Quincy. Met a couple up the street, the Coopers. And he was a veteran and we would go up there and walk up his house. At the time he could walk, you know, two miles to the neighbors and nobody bothers. So I'd walk up to his house and spend, you know, every couple days with them, just hanging around and have an ice cream and coffee and some of his war stories. So it started then. And my grandfather was probably my best friend growing up. So I've always been, I think, just reincarnated really old person in a younger body.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Well, that's definitely an asset.
An old soul mania is a, is a better term, so.
Reincarnated. Well, we've had the recommendation from the board and the director. I think all we need to do is have a motion to appoint Mr. Ragneta.
Is there a time?
Forever.
June 30th, 2023.
You say 2044? Yeah, exactly. I'll move it.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming and putting your time in.
Thank you very much.
And you're going to be working with some nice people, maybe one.
There's one, one is tonight, one's in there?
No, one.
I'll get you for that.
On the way out, he's just going to get you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. We're seeing time, yes, ladies.
Take care, good evening.
Yes, you too. We miss you.
Our 7 o'clock is not coming in.
Correct.
So we can keep going here.
Just, oh, I'll bring why up that up. For High Hope's location that they were suggesting is not going to work for the reasons that have been publicized before. They're going to be, they would have been within 500 feet of a line built tavern. Under the town's current bylaws, we can't have mailwater establishments within 500 feet of a establishment as a pouring license. Packaged stores would be fine, pouring restaurants per se would not be. There's no reason that the town couldn't make a change in the bylaw, but we're not going to turn around and do it today or this week. It would probably be brought up in May. Something that the board wanted to consider at a later date, it could do so. But back up to number eight, street light for Anawan and Hemlock. My contact in National Grid did tell me that the floodlight that Lindy's had put on the telephone pole that Anawan and Home Street has been, it's Holes, not Hemlock, obviously, was turned off by them. So right now we have no light at that intersection. Normally, under the criteria the town has, that would be a legitimate place for a street light. But normally we also bring that up at town meeting each May in terms of any additional street lights. Given the amount of traffic really at that intersection, I would recommend in fact that the board tell me to get a price for getting the street light at least for six, six months of the rest of the fiscal year and go to the finance committee for a reserve fund transfer. It would certainly fall unforeseen. We would never have expected the light to be turned off. And I would still then in May bring an article to town meeting to add it on a permanent basis after that. But I think it'd be just for safety concerns. I think it's a prudent thing to put in for the first, next six months.
I totally agree with you. I, just for clarity, am I wrong? The light that was currently there or previously there was actually a flood type light?
Yes.
We're going to put a regular street light, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We're not just returning on the flood light.
Okay, because that would be the appropriate thing to do.
Yeah. So if that meets with the board's approval, the board can tell me that with a motion and I will go to the finance committee meeting on the 21st, ask for the necessary funding. So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you.
Green Earth Cannabis, which is the retail facility, has proposed for Mopatza Street next to Twin Lakes Liquors. They'll be submitting a new HCA in preparation for their meeting with the board on Thursday. We don't have it yet, but my hope is that we'll have it available for Thursday. At least for as part of initial discussion, we've already talked to High Hope's. On Bud's Goods, Keith Swanson was in earlier today. He brought in a drawing showing how far away the water line, which is about 4,400 feet.
Whoa.
Yeah. So I don't know what the board wants to do. I certainly can't recommend that there be a requirement that they pay for everything for 4,400 foot water extension. Obviously the town could, as you know, we've talked about, do a betterment where we appropriate the necessary money, the line goes in, there's a betterment against the taxpayers or the property owners along that stretch. But it won't be the sole.
I don't.
Did we have a cost estimate?
No, I didn't. But I would say it would be considerable.
Yeah, it'd be huge money. And everybody who needs water currently, I believe, has water. It isn't a matter of somebody having a dead well or anything.
I guess my whole reasoning for thinking that was because it would be a benefit to the town. It would be something that we could actually point to and say, this is what we spent the money on.
Yeah, but I think for the first five years, we're in pretty good shape anyway. I think it's kind of a.
And also I don't even know if the first five years, depending on their revenue stream, what the first five years is going to pay for it.
Right. It's such a big question mark as to what they will bring in, what they will be able to contribute to the town, if they're going to be around for a long time. I mean, because with this, I think in the short term, anything we get out of that arrangement is for the benefit of the town, especially where we don't really know where we're going to be in the next year or so. I mean, right now the projections are kind of okay, but we're rolling back. If we have a real setback, revenues are going to go down again. I don't think we need to do it now in any event, but.
But I mean, I can ask Keith for an estimate, but I just don't think there's a legitimate way of saying to them, you're paying full freight on a water line. We're, it's that, we're talking almost a mile long.
Now, I can see them saying, yeah, we'll pull a full freight, but we're not going to give you the 2% or 3% of what we receive from them. Well, if they need water, they've already committed to putting in wells, so I don't see the urgency here on our part. See no movement on this at this time.
Okay. So would that bring, I mean, I bring back the HCA, I'm going to bring back the HCA to you all on Thursday and you either give me a go or no go as to the revised HCA on Thursday.
Okay.
Vacation carryover, given how long the pandemic's lasted, obviously it's lasted for the first six months of the fiscal year and for the most part, the next six months. And so we're back in a situation we can see now ahead of time, whereas last year or earlier this year, we were looking at May and June and saying, hey, you know, people haven't been able to take a vacation, you know, we should carry it over, we should allow carryover. We're in this same boat now where obviously travel is highly restricted. So I'm not saying the board needs to make any decision tonight, but I think the board needs to consider whether to set up an ability to carry over more vacation than would normally be allowed. And so that people can get a heads up earlier, let's say, starting in January, as to the ability to do so.
Would that affect the contract negotiations?
Well, yeah, I mean, we, basically the board gave its blessing on the contracts, not in terms of negotiations, but they had called a variance or a waiver for last fiscal year for fiscal '20 to fiscal '21, even for the union contracts, that it would allow carryovers to a certain extent more than was normally allowed in the contract. So for instance, let's say a contract said 40 hours, you allowed an 80-hour carryover. But I think it'd be helpful to union and non-union members to have a heads up early on that whether they're going to have, you know, how much of a use it or lose it situation they're going to be in the next six months in that they may not be able to on a regular basis travel, for instance, out of state. For instance, we, you know, we've talked about as part of COVID, someone coming back from one of the high-risk states has to quarantine or has to get tested. And then they could use the COVID, federal COVID leave. Well, right now that leave is almost certainly going to be ending on December 30th, so they won't have that ability during the next six months. Testing, yes, but they won't have a specific federal COVID leave available to them. They can use their own vacation leave and sick leave and such, but.
On that note about the CARES Act, two weeks disappearing, should we have a discussion on what the town's going to do? Because right now the town is saying you can use your sick time after you take the two weeks. But if we have people that have been put out because they are on a contact list, they were on the high contacts, they had to sit out the two weeks. They got the, I forget the.
The federal COVID.
Yeah, the federal COVID leave. But say the first week in January, there are high exposure contact, again, they don't have symptoms, but they're out again. What are we, as a board, going to make them take for leave? Because they don't, they wouldn't have that federal.
Right, well, they could, you know, if they've saved their sick leave and still have vacation leave, that's one of the things they can do.
Okay.
I mean, the other way is how we dealt with it right at the beginning, which was for the first couple of months, the board in essence said, you know, if you're work, if you're not able to come to work and you're not able to work from home, we're going to continue to pay you. There's no leave involved per se with making payments. I think we've reached a point where we're not doing that anymore. But the people who have used up all their sick time and/or vacation may have a challenge, but.
But again, I guess on that note, I would tell people that they should thank their vacation time as a possibility. Because we're on the hook for the liability of the vacation time. I can't see extending that. You know, we don't really know how long this is going to last at this point in time.
Well, didn't they just pass a bill recently, you know, for COVID to extend the payments on leave?
I'm not aware of anything.
They haven't done anything yet.
I was looking at news or something, I'm sure I'm wrong. But the thing that bothers me about this is that we make sure that the employees understand that this is a one-shot thing going because of the COVID, that's what is going to carry over in the next few years.
Well, I'll take.
Well, it's going to be a challenge no matter what.
Well, let you do this, I'm putting the thought in your heads that we need to have that conversation. It doesn't have to conclude tonight. We continue talking about Thursday. We'll have one more probably Thursday night meeting, night, afternoon meeting this year. We're going to probably have to have a special meeting sometime between the 17th and the end of the year, the 24th and the 31st of the Thursdays.
Yeah.
You probably need to, as much as we're usually now not meeting on Monday, it might be prudent either the 21st or the 28th to meet.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe more like the 28th because we won't be meeting until after.
I think would be the better, yeah.
But we can continue this discussion tonight. I'm not asking for a decision, I just simply something for the board to think about.
Consider, sure.
More Mondays, South Ambulance Abatements, November 2020, $61,369.31 for the board to approve.
So moved. Second. All those in favor? Aye, unanimous.
From the Water Department, there's a Tonto River Basin Waterman, Water Management Act withdrawal permit. There's no action needed by the board. We see this just as a matter of protocol of the Water Department handles withdrawal permit, but just to notice the board. McDonald Industries, there's a truck or two still going up more early into our circuit every few weeks. Chris Winnewich is good about if he notices it, notifying me, if I immediately notify Marilyn McDonald. She gets back to me fairly quickly, within, you know, a few minutes or an hour or so. She's in contact with the trucking company. She's making donations, I guess, to the food bank, sort of to say, you know, we're penalizing ourselves for having these trucks come in. It's still happening, but obviously it's not happening every day or every week. And Chris, it would be contacting me more often if it was.
Well, the good thing is they're reacting. They've been making an effort to do this.
Cultural Council, I'm recommending, I know it sounds weird, I don't know if it's a conflict of interest, I don't know who can make the recommendation if it's not me. But by recommending the flame of myself back to the Cultural Council, I've been off for a year. And for the council to actually operate and award grants, we need five members. I think we're at three or four right now.
Two.
Two, well, we've got to build it back up during the next couple of weeks because the grant award cycle, the applications are due next week. And then we've got to start the process of awarding grants for Cultural Council.
You're going to have time, isn't it, Charlie?
Yeah.
It's just another night in town.
Well, usually we do a 4:15 meeting or something like that, so.
So moved. Second. All those in favor? Aye.
All right.
All right.
Go to those. Part?
It's okay if I, should I vote on this one?
If you want to skip it, that's fine. I agree, cut to two votes.
Okay.
Yeah. Eight Hill Delane, the board wanted me to bring this back. I don't know what action the board wants to take, but just to outline what's happening, this is a multifamily, 21-unit proposed project on the, at Eight Hill Delane. A special permit and variance is necessary for the project will be before the ZBAs of public hearing this coming Monday at 8:00. Playboard met with the developer back on Thursday for discussions about site plan and subdivision. They're going to schedule a hearing on the site plan, no earlier than January, just in terms of timing. You know, if they're going to, if they're having a site plan hearing, they have to give that a quick notice in the paper and to the letters and such, and that won't happen for the meeting on the 17th. So I would expect it's going to be the first meeting, maybe the first meeting or the second meeting in January. I don't know if the board's thinking of making any notes, recommendations, whatever, to planning and zoning, but it's there that we do still have copies of the plans, I believe, downstairs.
Anybody has any time to review and want to make a comment, we can do that Thursday.
Blood Drive, the Red Cross would like to continue to hold Blood Drive every other month. I did note that the capacity of the town hall would be reduced, or the Great Hall would be reduced in December of 2021, assuming that the pandemic has ended to the extent that we can have holidays in Halifax. So that instead of just having the tree here, we'll have the train set, still being built at that point. And the, one of the things I was thinking about this afternoon is they want to do it every other month. One possibility would be to have them, if they want to, have it one in late November rather than early December. They want to be planned every other month, but it might meet their needs.
I was asked to express some concerns from some of the employees about having a lot of additional people coming in and out of the town hall. What happens is a lot of people don't know exactly where to go, so they start stalking people in the hallway and knocking on doors and whatnot. I don't know if it's a real issue, but I was asked to bring it up, so I'm bringing it up.
Well, if the problem is the confusion for the participants, we can put up better signage.
Well, that's part of it, and part of it is the concern that it's additional possibilities of exposure in and out of the building during the day. I'm not suggesting it's a bad thing, I'm just.
Yeah.
Would it be possible to have them come through the far door, the front door, you know, the stairs?
They've been trying to do a one-way, come in this way and leave that way.
Yeah, well, see, this way they're not, they're only taking up a portion of the building. They're not going all the way around the corner. If they come through this door, somebody stationed down there, went into what direction to go, they could go in and out.
Would it be possible to have them scheduled on Saturdays?
Well, that was.
They originally had the first one or two on Saturdays, and I can ask them about that.
Yeah, I think that's a better arrangement.
If the employees are concerned.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a legitimate concern.
You'll have to have to touch base with Scott because he usually allows for the two days of the weekends for settling with any potential.
Yeah, because we do the fogging on Tuesday nights. And the idea was, mind you, basically, you know, with the, well, we, not we, Royal, even me, but in general, the surface problem is not a significant problem. Areas, but not surfaces. So, you know, back when we started this, the idea of fogging was we had two days of business here in town hall on Monday, Tuesday, and then two days Wednesday and Thursday, a light day Friday, not many people here, period. And then extending that into the weekend, so then any virus would be dead by the time people showed up on Monday. The same is not true for Saturday. Whether the board would want to ask Scott then to do fogging, let's say, Saturday afternoon after they're out of here or on Sunday or something, I don't think.
That's another burden on the maintenance team. Currently they're on Fridays, right?
They're on Fridays, right.
Which is a limited time for people in the building. I, I, let's think about it enough that I want to keep kicking our can down the road till Thursday, but.
Well, the reason I brought up my thought was just it makes it easier then I can through the whole building. You can have the sign standing up the stairs and.
Well, and let me, you know, if you talk about Thursday, in the meantime, I can contact the Red Cross to throw out a few possibilities. One is, can we change the flow? So it's just limited to these stairs? Can they change the way the room works? And that, you know, they do use the kitchen for sort of for, you've done your blood work, you're now sitting there. But also they use it for the, for beyond boarding, so that they test people, make sure they don't, you know, they do the testing for COVID and everything else. But they also do, when people are done, that's where people sit, they have their snack and everything like that. Now, you know, maybe I, you know, let's see what we can do on that. Or also throw out the Saturday possibility.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a lot of employees in the building on Friday, but it also takes up the kitchen area.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, let me ask, let's see what they can do, what they can do. And we'll bring it back to the board Thursday. You know, I don't have anything else except for the, oh, yeah, the licenses.
Yeah, you said you got to do your discussions.
Yes, I did, I did.
So everything, what you guys can do is you guys could do this kind of thing together, don't you guys?
Yeah.
You guys back in the kitchen. So maybe the staff will.
Want to start with the, start with the package stores?
Well, I would recommend you just do the whole list.
The whole list?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with any of them myself.
You can refer to the list that. Right.
Right. Does anybody have anything to exclude?
For the alcohol or everything?
The whole page.
I would do the whole, unless there's an objection or concern or question about any particular license under any of the categories.
The only concern that I had was we had Davis listed last month on a.
Yes, they've caught up.
So everything's.
Davis is caught up and the country club is caught up. Well, Davis at least is on some sort of payment plan. I don't know if they're completely caught up, but they've made a substantial debt in their past due bills.
I'm good. Is anybody else is good? Do you want me to read them all or?
No, I would just say based on, you know, you have the list, it's printed in the agenda. You can refer that for your motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2021 license renewals printed within the agenda.
One second. All those in favor? Aye unanimous.
Here, we'll send these down for signatures. Is it 7:30 or 7:15?
It is 7:15 in the Water Commission. It is now 7:15.
Spend a few minutes signing stuff. Then eventually once the water commissioners come in, we'll get to executive session.
Right. All right, so we done with the camera stuff now?
I would say so. I would sign the motion to go to executive session, if you do it in public session.
Okay, all right.
I guess, you know, this way if any informal conversation.
Okay, I'll just leave it then. Start signing.
You notice I signed my name very small on this?
That's for the card for the.
Tom, I'm going to just turn the ones that I can't do the opposite direction.
Yeah, okay, that's good. That way I can find them easy, thank you. Oh my God, is there enough of them?
Yeah, we'll see about that. How's it going, guys?
Thought we'd leave early.
So the secretary of signing licenses, right now the public is to be.
But we can do, they can sign them later, you know, tomorrow. I mean, they don't have to be out until the end of March. So, because I know we still sign them all.
Yeah. All right, yeah, let's go into executive session.
So I make a motion that we go into executive session, where the Water Commission is, to discuss the mixed unit collective bargaining, contract negotiation.
As discussing.
Discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. I'll also add Silver Lake to that, I can give an update afterwards.
I'll second that, and I, yes, Karen, yes.
Andrews, yes.
Williams, yes.
All right.
We're now on executive session.
All right, let me disconnect this.
And we will not be coming back to conduct any regular business. Thank you, everyone.